For the Monday. Regular session of Borough Council meeting order, please rise for the invitation.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work on behalf of the citizens of Sauterton. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of borough officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us to have the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, the sense of the true needs of the citizens of Sauterton, and the ability that we may work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved borough of Sauterton. In Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
Amen, please relieve standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Secretary, will you please report the vote call? Tracy Burke. Edward Hoover. Matthew Dinanna. Sarah Littlefield. Here. Billy Mundon.
Up here.
Barbara Rogers.
Yeah.
Matthew Shawley. Richard Paul Zach.
Here.
And Courtney Walker. Yes, Mike, both Courtney and Matt. Alright, the next up is consideration of minutes and may I please have two distinct motions.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June fifth, twenty twenty-three regular Borough Council meeting.
A second.
Motion by Councilor Littlefield and Mundon for approval of the June fifth regular session Borough Council meeting. Are there any necessary corrections? Alright, hearing none or all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes and likewise for the work session meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Borough Council Work Session Meeting Minutes.
Don't be shy everyone.
A second.
Okay, I have motion by the same council for June nineteen, twenty twenty-three Borough Council Work Session Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections for those? If there are none or all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well. Alright, Mike, do you have any presentation of correspondence?
I do not have that.
Okay, very well, then I'm gonna open up my specialty tour that I did before, Jessica.
Yes.
Would you like to say something?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself personally, a few of you guests tonight.
I'm Jessica Simony, I'm the manager for Sauterton Connects. Um, I have a list tonight. But I'll go quickly, I'll go quickly. First of all, just wanted to say we were all sad that the June third Friday had to be basically canceled because of the weather that day. Um, even though that evening, nothing ever happened. Um, the daytime was really bad and to be honest, I had a lot of people by noon canceling. We had two food vendors, we had the entire bounce house kid zone, he canceled. I had the main stage band canceled, so and then about eight or nine vendors. So that was all by noon and I had to make the call by one thirty and really out of respect for everybody, people travel far. I want to make sure that, you know, Chief's staff knew and Mike's crew and Steve's crew were all, you know, not there right at six, ready to go and we weren't. So, um, hopefully we won't have to make another call like that. So everyone just always hope on that third Friday for some. Um, but I'll be honest, it was kind of an amazing night. We of course tagged all the businesses that stayed open. We encouraged people to go out and I will be honest, so many businesses that stayed open welcomed the vendors that had perishable food items to come in that night, Love Obsessed, Raw Replenish, a few others, that those vendors completely sold out of their things. So that was wonderful and so many people are making comments on the page. So I was really proud of this town for coming through for those people. Um, everyone pretty much thanked me. I know there's a few people upset, but that's okay. Can't, can't win them all. Um, so everyone who was scheduled for June is gonna come to July and August. So those will be really fantastic because we'll have a lot of people, especially in July, um, coming. And, um, in July, we also have a professional photographer who has volunteered her time to come out and take some new shots of the event. So if you want to be famous, come on out and we'll get your picture and we'll post it online and everything. Um, so that's, that's nice. Well, some fresh photos. And, um, back on the twenty-eighth, I just want to report our econ development, economic development committee hosted the first of what we're calling business bites because we're offering light refreshment. And we're bringing in speakers for these events. We're gonna host them every month to two months, depending on, you know, who we can get out. But our first one was Michelle Kane of Voices Matter. She's a marketing firm and she came to speak. It was well attended. I mean, we did have a little over twenty people come, which was great for businesses coming out on a Wednesday night. Um, and they learned a lot from her. We had a great time. I'm very proud because they all went back as I had asked them to and talked to other of their friends who are businesses in town. And I have gotten a couple of emails from people that said, tell me more about Sauterton Connects. What is this? I mean, you know, some people just aren't aware. So that was nice that we're hearing more from people. Um. So yeah, we're gonna try and plan that. Um, another one, probably host that on B Smith's deck, maybe August or something like that. Um, our jam is officially up now live, so everyone can go vendors. I'm starting to listen to bands and talk to the food trucks. So that one's gonna be a great event as well. Um. The holiday tree is all here. I talked to Steve. I'm gonna go over tomorrow because I think all the ornaments are also here because he said there's about twenty boxes. So, um, I've also already talked to Betsy Roush at Unives. They're the sponsor for the holiday tree and we're going to do some cute marketing because we have to put the tree together prior to December um, to make sure it's all connecting and the lights turn. So we're gonna make it a fun, interactive, social media event, like a Christmas in July type thing. And she and I are working to do that. So I'll coordinate with your guys, exactly. So we're not doing that last minute. So we'll do some fun social media posts and, and, you know, invite some of the people out in town if they want to come in. And lastly, really, we are in the process. I don't know if anyone's seen it, but we're hiring a new bookkeeper. And we've gotten, I've done interviews in the last two weeks and we're narrowing it down. We have our last two tomorrow. So I hope within the week that we're transitioning to that and we'll be in good shape. So. That's everything.
I have a quick one. What's the date of the art jam again?
It's September thirtieth. Ten to five.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm watching Branch Creek. Do you know if they're, will they be open for the next third Friday?
So Branch Creek should be open for third Friday. They're doing, you know, these soft openings. He was open on Friday and Saturday last week. He's gonna do it again this week, Friday and Saturday. And we have talked to him about that. He would love it if we would bring more food trucks in and kind of pull them down. Well, we love it too. But I think right now we're gonna do something, maybe balloons on a sign so people know to continue down Chestnut and kind of see that. We do still need to put a partition up so people don't drive into Chestnut and so the, um, usually I turn a food truck, but we're not gonna do that this time. We'll just put out a blockade like we do at the other side and, you know, hopefully crowds will go down there. I think that'll be a nice space for people to walk to.
Great.
Yeah, alright, thank you very much.
Penelope. You have anything for the team?
Thank you, alright, I'm leaving today.
Okay, I tried to front end load a couple of you regulars. Alright, and if council doesn't object, I have one more that I would prefer not to wait for public comment. So would you guys like to come out? Just introduce yourself. I know you have a business concern, place of business.
So my name is John Fiori and I'm with Velocity Venture Partners. Uh, our company owns one fifty South Front Street, uh, here in Sauterton. With me this evening is Stevie Parker, who is the owner of Powerhouse Soccer. Uh, Powerhouse Soccer is a tenant of ours, uh, on the lower level of this building. Uh, some quick history here. We purchased this building, uh, in the second quarter of last year, I believe. And Powerhouse Soccer was already a tenant, uh, from the previous owner there. Through that real estate transaction, we came to find out that, uh, they were placed there without kind of going through the, the proper protocol uh, of getting a UNO permit and, uh, a use variance as their use is not permitted in the C two unless you go for a conditional use hearing. So we've made application with his own hearing board. They currently have that application and are reviewing it. Uh, the reason why we're here and the reason why we've done that is, uh, Powerhouse Soccer's lease, uh, is, is up this year. But they have expressed the willingness, uh, to stay in this location and were amenable to that. So prior to us entering into a long-term transaction that, uh, you need to do some housekeeping here with, with the borough. And so, uh, we, we've started that process. And we want to come before council this evening to, uh, introduce ourselves as the landowner, but then also introduce, uh, you know, Stevie and Powerhouse Soccer to council and to you Mr. Mayor to see if you have any questions about, uh, her use or what she does. But, you know, we feel that, um, you know, its location and, and the use there is, you know, is quite perfect. It's not a high intensity use. Um, it's one-on-one soccer training. Maybe it's two or three kids. She could, you know, speak a little bit more to it, but, um, we think it's a great fit, um, for the building, especially in, in that location and it's next to some ball fields over there. So it ties in rather nicely. And their time of use versus the two tenants that are on the upper floor, uh, don't really conflict because they're kind of a daytime business. They're more kind of in the evening. Uh, it, and then of that nature. So we won't, yes.
One, give me one second. So council, I just want to caution you, like, we will not deliberate about this, alright? It'd be great to know. Uh, if you have any questions regarding the use of the facility in the building and straight to meet you guys and, uh, business owners and operators. Uh, but, uh, I don't want to have any undue influence on the zoning board, alright?
Yeah, we're here as a, as a courtesy to introduce ourselves and for you. Time to ask any questions about us as a company and then also.
When do you operate? I walk by there probably two or three times a day, every day, and I've never even seen the booth. And I assume, I've heard that you're using the, maybe the basement.
That's right, yeah.
Tell us a little bit about what you do and when you do it.
Yeah, so during the school year, I work after school. Um, I work with kids, so it has to be when they're out of school. So usually three P M start. If they're off of school, I get to start a little earlier, which is nice for me because then I can have dinner at all times. Um, but usually I work until like eight or nine at night. So it's like three to, three to nine-ish. Um, and just like John said, it's very private. So it's one-on-one partner sessions where kids bring a partner and I train both of them at the same time. Or sometimes small groups of four and then I'm, they're training the four of them. So primarily it's teammates. They'll come in together and I'll work with them. Um, and it's all technical training. So it gives them the fundamental skills that they need to play on the field. The space is obviously not big enough to be running full soccer games. So it's nothing like that. It's all giving them the tools to be successful when they are on the field in a bigger space. Um, so yeah, that would be why you don't see me some down basement. Um, but during the school, yeah, like during, like I said, during the school year, it's evening. But during the summer, it's really just whenever the kids are available. So I'm have the opportunity to work more hours in a day because I'm available obviously all day and it just depends on when they can come in. So.
So are they walkers or do the parents come and why?
Come, um, yeah, I guess sometimes they stay and watch. Most of them stay and watch. My older kids that are in high school drive themselves. They come in, they go out as they please. Um, some parents like to sit in the car so that they can give me the time to coach their kids and, you know, do my thing without them like, you know, staring us down. A lot of parents like to stay though. So it is, sometimes they're in there, sometimes they're not. It just depends.
This is a building that is, uh, in the middle of South Front. It's like a large factory.
Yeah, there's two, there's two, the, yeah, there's two tenants on the, on the upper floor, first article and electronic assembly.
Alright.
And I always get one of those confused, but there is, uh, I think Electronic Assembly owned the building.
Yeah.
And we purchased it from them.
And you guys are in the B.
Correct, yeah.
I didn't either. Ends my street front, so I go by it.
You get to it, you get to it from the back.
Yeah.
But yeah, but yeah.
So I'm confused that you were, it's a commercial property that is operating at a much more commercial use on the first floor. What's the issue with the, her and the base?
Any particular uses is recognized as a conditional use or no, it's no other permit's issued. So we need to work through some sort of technicalities.
Mike, when will the zoning board meet?
Uh, we have to get that scheduled. The application was just filed a week or so ago.
Yeah, we filed it on the twenty-sixth of June, so.
How great, while that is under review.
They're all noticed that the use is, it's not currently permitted, but it's not issued this season.
They're gonna present a variance.
Yes.
On conditional use.
We, we have. We were on the right street and then her door faced the front. We could have filed a conditional use. It seems like a odd technicality, but that's why we're not doing conditional use. So.
Thanks, uh, thanks for giving us some insight. It's great to be here.
Thank you for coming out.
You know, we'll probably talk about that a little bit at the next work session, but I, I think given it'll clear the zoning board.
Okay.
You know, we'll let that process, of course. When does your lease expire?
It's the fourth quarter of this year. So, but we're looking to do a five-year term.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I'm sure, I'm sure to be solid.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Alright then, when you want to. Minister of Department. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah, a couple things. July, as Jeff has already told you, is a busy month. Uh, we have tomorrow specifically is a busy day, uh, as the new, as Pepe's Stakes has their grand opening at eleven A M. At one forty-four North Main Street. That'll be exciting for those of you that are missing Caruso's like I am. Uh, and then tomorrow at seven is the Moyer five K. So typically there's five to seven hundred runners coming, starting to the park and going around Sauterton. And then afterwards, there's Jesse's Barbecue and beer from Branch Creek. And, uh, it's not too late to register, so you can register the day of. Uh, so that'll be a fun community event. And Concert Sundays is in full swing. The new building is working really well. We're fully moved in now. Uh, we, we've concert Sunday. It's fully moved in. Uh, it makes everything so much easier. It rained the last two Sundays, but, uh, so we were at Indian Crest, but when we're in the park, it's so much easier to get everything out and set up. And when they need more ice cream, you just walk over instead of driving across the park. Uh, it's great. And the next couple concerts are a Springsteen Cover Band, Class of Eighty-Four, which is an eighties cover band. Marion Concert Band, which is, uh, which is classical music and that Motor City Review, which is Motown. So, and a good lineup. And, uh, we're still meeting with more sponsors. We had Leon Moyer and I had another, went to another sponsor for the park this morning. So money is still coming in hopefully and, uh, and something really good out there. Good things are happening. Uh, Penny didn't necessarily mention it, but because it's not in the month of July, but in August, I think it's August eighth.
Thank you.
Oh, showed me. August nineteenth, the Dinner and Wine, which is also part of the benefit of the library. Uh, so by the time we have this meeting, it would be kind of, if you'd like to buy tickets, so, uh, keep that on your calendar. And the last thing we did this month is, uh, last week, we had a, uh, reception of Generations for William Stock, who is a local artist that really is a, an incredible artist that he is sort of, uh, observed and in his home most of the time. He's in his eighties and for the first time ever, Generations got him out to do this art show. And it was incredible. It's a fact that we have that caliber of artist living in Sauterton, something to think. Uh, and he's an honorary chief of the Monapee Tribe, which is the Native American of the Houston and have this area, uh, and the focus of all his work is, uh, primarily Native American art. And it was awesome. And it was, uh, really cool to do and Generations did a great job. I highlighted the guy that lived in Sauterton for fifty years. And it was like a world-renowned publisher and artist. Nobody ever knew he was here. So that was pretty cool of him. That's all I have.
No one you have pronounced Monapee.
I know, I just.
Didn't say Monapee.
Me too.
John would. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Chief Newbaugh.
Good evening. I sent out my report last week just for a couple of things. The crowd has been seventy-three, seventy-three dragon stops, thirty-four citation version, eight vehicle crashes, three with injuries. Uh, two of those DUI related crashes, six arrests, hundred and thirty-four police services, sixty-five assistance to our neighbors. And hundred and fifty-one other calls, that's seventy-three-one calls for the month. Uh, with twenty-one per day, a little over forty-five hundred calls for the year, which is a twenty percent increase over last year. Um, our arrests are down, our serious crime is down, our minor crimes are up about fifteen percent. That's unusual. Um, the mentioned before, we're now partnered with Bus Patrol to issue citations, civil citations, the people that go past school buses. Uh, we've had thirty-three reported violations and have issued twenty-two citations, uh, and one I did about an hour ago. Um, unfortunately, we've been averaging about one DUI arrest a week. As the team is rather busy. Uh, I included to the board our training calendar for the year, but we're more than half done, with fifty-six percent done, which is great. Uh, forty-five percent of our new and updated policies have been issued, uh, towards accreditation, which is our just process. But we're, we're going faster than I thought we would, so I'm very happy about that. Um, in an effort to save our taxpayers money and me being cheap who I am, um, we were able to get twelve hundred dollars worth of traffic equipment for four hundred and ten dollars of scratch and then sell one of our suppliers. It's all new stuff. It just gave them damage and roller blue fixes everything. So we now have a whole swarm of new, um, things to put out, don't control traffic signs, cones, uh, portable speed bump, things of that sort. We're very happy about that. Um, we were granted permission by the Commonwealth to host another class like we did for our DUI class that we had here. So we'll be hosting de-escalation class for police officers in the Chatham County area. And that'll actually be in September, so we're very proud of that. As the mayor said, wear five Ks tomorrow, so we will be on hand for that. Um, we're at the Variety Club on June twenty-ninth. Uh, we attended the help out of the kids' annual community day. Uh, I was surprised to see how many kids from the Sauterton School District were there and how many from our borough were there, uh, which was really great to interact with them. That was a fun day. Uh, Deb Collins resigned as the crossing guard. Uh, we are very grateful for her years of service. She was my go-to. If I had to call out, she was our, our cover pitcher. So I'm gonna miss her greatly.
What was her spot?
Uh, she's at Main Reliance, but she's at the big. Um, so I'm very grateful for her. As a result, I'm already looking to fill one permanent, one substitute crossing guard position with the board's approval. Um, and the last thing I had is as many people have commented to us, it was in the paper last week. We concluded a twenty, we probably concluded a twenty-two month investigation. And we've arrested a former band instructor from the Sauterton High School for crimes we were committing quite a while ago. Uh, turns out that investigation is still actually continuing because more people are coming forward. Uh, so we are staying busy with that. Uh, and the last thing I would like to do is, uh, if you haven't neglected to, I mentioned to the board that one of our part-time officers stepped down for the family reasons. And I would like the board's permission, uh, to fill that part-time spot. Uh, if.
Okay. Let me, let me hit a person open up for any other questions for Chief. Uh, first of all, from council, are there any objections to Chief filling the part-time police officer and the crossing guard position? Alright, without objection, Chief, on both of this. And my first question, DUIs, are they the result of, do you find them more as a result of accidents or noticeable reckless driving?
Over the last eight, um, actually with our, it was nine, over the last nine that we've had, uh, three were crashes, the other we found. Um, one was reported by front two as we caught up to it. And then the other one was the officer's.
Alright, and my second is more of a comment as opposed to a question. Uh, I won't be here at the work session. I would have brought up that. Uh, actually, the, the owner of the business on one fifty South Street who is here, there's a stop sign right there at the intersection of Montgomery. It's Montgomery, but you're sure. Uh, heading towards Cherry Lane. It's unbelievable, the number of cars that fly through that. And.
I've been there for twenty-three years.
I, I can't believe how much, I, I've noticed five in the last three or four weeks. But today really caught my eye because there was a road rage as a result of it. And I was walking that way towards Cherry. The car on Montgomery chased them down. Can you just have the officers keep an eye there and see? Uh, and Steve, I know we're not at your part yet, but maybe take a look. I don't know if there's something. The sign doesn't seem obscure to me, the stop sign. It's, people are definitely regularly just bypassing that sign.
We've spent the last ten days focusing on this area. We did, sorry, we've been stopping people at second and Summit for blowing those stop signs. Uh, that's what we've been doing for the last week. We'll happily switch.
Thank you. Okay, other questions for Chief?
The, the bus patrol thing. That's like twenty-two violations. That's like, that's a lot. People, I say all that school buses. That's terrifying. I don't have a kid in school grade yet.
I mean, don't you learn that in tenth grade that like.
You learn in driving school.
Before you even go to kick it. From watching the video, which is actually quite good and looking at some of the drivers, they're just straight ahead and going to see the bus.
Do they like go over the double yellows and they go around it or?
No, they're mostly stopped.
Oh, they're on the other side.
Um, how do our numbers compare to like the neighborhood? I don't know if you have.
I, I don't know.
No?
And do they get points?
No, this is the, the civil citation which is sent out. So the impetus that you pay to find which we get a portion thereof is that they do not get points.
Okay.
If they choose to not follow through, then we have the option of issuing these things.
Okay.
Thus far, no one has, I know several of the citations have been paid. Thus far, no one has lost yet.
Well, they all stop for buses. We don't have a chance with the crosswalk.
No, I forget that, right?
Well, we dig some more crosswalk signs, which I'm gonna be putting out.
Okay, she's still looking out?
Uh, no, just stand, stand.
Um, I think we're gonna talk about the ordinance for. We can have a little bit.
Now.
Open carry. Yeah, open carries, yeah. Boy. It's alright.
That's okay. Open carry of an open container. Lee, give me a break.
Shirley, absolutely, sir.
Um, you have your report in front of you from our office. I don't have anything to add to that, although I did not review any ornaments for open carry.
Open carry of open. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Um, Steve, other questions?
Everyone should have had a popular view before, obviously, some of the highlights. I think that what happened last month in the highway, the D month in my life, uh, brush collection was I'm gonna have for brush collection to begin in June. That was a lot of hours. Um, we're working on the street sweeping and also, uh, keeping ahead of the crowd. Yeah, the, the, we can go in the prep, rainforest, she does, or the steps that he does, the free going. That was going on in parks. Uh, that's some rain, rare start, but we take them off in the middle of the month. So, uh, we're in full swing and mowing. Uh, we had three Saturday sewer issues. We had talked about at work session. We were able to complete the one. We're still working on the second one beneath, uh, our West Broad Street. Uh, we thought we had a lateral or borough maps of, uh, sewer lateral there. There was a single home that was turned into a, or called a food plant. So they're sharing one lateral going out, out the front of the house and then out to the street. We thought we had a second lateral there that could be used and they had not found that. We thought we had a second lateral there that could be used and they had not found that, so. Then the boss does with engineer working on a open road from at the Pendo, which we need to come across that street or lateral. We're still waiting on our TV guy that we use, Bruce, checking lines internally. Just to see there's a bit on our plan, so we can run a camera up the line and see we have a six inch line there, or two four inch lines. That's our last option, we're doing, we can't find it that way, we'll have to put a lateral in and run that across Broad Street. I think we got working on this one. We, we thought we had been called about some inlets, I apologize, just trying to get out to them. So today we actually cleaned all the inlets in the borough pretty much. And also took a record of which ones needed to be backed out with our back trail we have. So the biggest one that we're getting on the local street, we did complete that, there were, there were three or four that were clogged up to the top. Players are still good, they're not clogged, they're operating, but the box is filled up and free. They have all been stopped down, I think we have like five more to do, yeah, come on, that would be impossible, so. After that, we would have been through all this old green boxes, pretty good, underneath the gray. We're down freight building, like I said, Travis, we're prepping now, we do all the last fours, he finished the new steps by the freight building. And he's filling the border, I think tomorrow or Wednesday. For the platform at the top, and then next Monday he is going. The platform, we put inside the border and that'll finish the top hole, platform will be done. So we're actually getting ready to talk through some landscapers about getting ready to take care of the. Plating along the back of that wall from those platforms. And then we'll be moving out to the front to complete the ramp that we did all left for that platform. And we just got the curb cut out and put in parking, so. In June or July here, we should have the top completely done, it's probably most of the ramp done and then we'll be, we should be able to see enough of the parking in the front. That's pretty much most of the slate we're at, but we're not there yet. That's that's pretty much it, rest of this moment is not, those are the big projects. That's my first thing.
Have you been out to the pool, anything going on there or is it going smooth?
Yeah, a little hiccup this weekend, we had barely parts. We were able to get through it and be ready for the swimming tonight.
Yeah, the swim meets tonight.
Mike must have been out doing a late night walk or board, I don't know what he was doing, but he called me like at nine thirty, how many chlorine issues in the lower pool? So we took care of that that night, we thought we got it, we fine tuned it the next day and everything, most of it turned today and yesterday.
Yeah.
So no, it's basically thorough operation.
Right.
Pretty good.
All right, thank you.
Steve, for the freight building, where that ramp is going to be, there are two conduits sticking out right there, what what happens to the beaver light?
The ramp is not, it's not, are they on the flood that way for the gas service and all this? If you look upon the street.
Okay, so. Trap just poured the steps and they're getting ready for the.
Oh, that conduit coming there?
Yes.
That's a part of some maybe future lighting, I believe, in the wall. Irrigation electric. And I might be missing one more thing, oh lamp, maybe some lights in the flower bed, yes.
Landscaping lighting, a couple of lights for the upper pad.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to envision exactly where the ramp is currently at.
I'm not sure you did that. From the road, have you walked up to other steps? There's a electric paneler just for that.
Ah, gotcha.
Maybe well, with that first ramp, there's a, there's in that little rain garden, there's a basin, there's an electric panel in there. That's powering everything that's gonna happen on that platform. Maybe some apples, blue, I'm sure. Electric up there to be done in that green net, plot along with platform and the and the platform.
I understand, and and Mike, another silly question, maybe on the same topic, what happens on that back wall? Because that looks like that wall would be a good place to sit potentially.
It is designed to sit and then there's a fence that goes on top.
Yeah, or or core drill that moved down, so we just got that returned, so that's viable, we'll be working on the rest of this week once we finish that.
It's like the cellular flash.
Exactly what's.
Exactly, same.
That fence will come all all across the path of.
There's enough room to skew that back and probably still have maybe a fourteen inch in the area. We won't surface that then, we want to fore drill that end of the block and make them up.
Sorry, and one more question, the. What was the property that you said became a duplex?
Down near the Lutheran Church one that on West Broad Street, seventy nine and eighty.
Yeah, it's actually a twin dwelling that.
Well, not a duplex.
A twin.
That's a duplex.
Twin dwelling, and they they actually got bearings to separate the two. The two parties are having a bit of a civil conflict.
Understood, but the property owners are responsible for the connection, but.
It seems like the best way to resolve.
It's not our responsibility though, right? We're just doing it because that's a service that we provide by by being.
They they wanna, the sewer from the one house is flowing into the other house and they wanna separate it. So that both houses flow out. We were going to wire that together in the street, but we could not find. The latter, we were looking for a six inch lateral, we could wire that off, but we were concerned that it was too small. We may need to, oh, we're gonna try to verify it with the televising the line, if not, we'll have to run it. But we are only gonna run to the curb line, if we have to put in a new lateral. We'll run it to the curb line, then the homeowner does put the curb line into the house.
Right, but that's still like, they have to pay for the connection for the lateral. Any other questions? All right, then. All right, Mike, last but not least.
The meeting schedule. Next week, seventeenth will be our monthly work session. We also have scheduled a special Borough Council meeting for Wednesday, July twenty sixth, starting at seven P M. This is actually concerning personnel matters, actually the next Borough Manager appointment. So the meeting will not be open to the public, rather it will be held in executive session. To discuss the recommendations of Borough Manager Search Committee. So that will take place on Wednesday, the twenty sixth, in the rear conference room, starting at seven P M.
Is there anyone here that thinks they won't be here for that meeting?
I won't be here for the work session, but I'll be here for, what's my sixth?
The twenty sixth, if that. All right, please let me know, that's a very important thing.
And then as far as the business for this evening, we start with a resolution. To approve and adopt the twenty twenty two Montgomery County Hazard Minigation Plan. The county puts together a hazard mitigation plan every roughly ten years. This is the newest plan. The primary hazards for most municipalities in Montgomery County are weather related hazards such as. Flooding that some municipalities experience this day. So it's important that. Center for pay attention to that plan, you keep our emergency management plans up to date. And approve the plan adopted by resolution, because if we would have a event. We would have to have this on file, the qualify for potentially emergency assistance. We have a series of appointments that have been recommended. They're looking to appoint a regular member to the Civil Service Commission along with an alternate member to the Civil Service Commission. With respect to the Fire Marshal, our our current Fire Marshal is Steve Call. We are proposing a change in deputy and assistant marshals. I'm on Albert Sergio, a borough resident. And past chief, president, current president of the fire company. And he's actually a building code official and code enforcement officer of Sheldon Township. He would become captain. And then our current deputy, who is filling in for Billy Paul Stow, will become our assistant, whose name is Donald Wedge. We're also looking at a recommendation to reappoint Andy Schlosser. To serve another term as a member of the center planning mission. Item C is a authorization to have the solicitor report with the preparation. Of ordinance to amend our open container regulations. To permit open, actually, the consumption of beer online. Third Fridays or other special events throughout the borough, there would be a permit. Process through the center police department for those sanctioned events. So the action this evening is to have solicitor report with the preparation of that ordinance and. We would love to formally consider that. Possibly at the office meeting, depending on how quickly that can be put together. The solicitor did prepare a memorandum that I did send out with the recommendations that our chief as well. The. Last item is authorization to go out for bid. For a road reconstruction projects contract, this is a mill and paint contract in place. We would be using liquid fuels funds to finance it. It's been a little while since we put together a comprehensive bid. We do have some money saved up in liquid fuels because we did not do paving last year. The streets that we're looking at are streets that are suitable to be milled with just a new wearing course. So you're looking at a inch and a half mill and putting back an inch and a half wearing course. The roads are frustrating, there's two blocks that are actually. The first block goes from Broad to Montgomery, the next block goes from Montgomery to Cherry. North Penn recently completed a water main project on West Avenue and West Walman Street. The base has been restored, like to go through and put in a wearing course on there. And then down on the other side of Broad Street, Mifflin Street going from West Broad Street up to Highland. That learning course is significantly dried out, it's very difficult to try to patch. And then we had water main work done on Highland Avenue, which would be restored. And then one block down is Madison Avenue between. Hansberger Lane. And that section of roadway as well is severely dried. Sort of. A little embarrassing, but we actually have breasts growing between that particular block in the street. So it would be good to to get those roads milled and restored before the base starts to deteriorate. We do expect that this project, we're hoping to attract some bids. Contractors are extremely busy, so we we don't know what, you know, what we're gonna ultimately end up with. But this project, I would expect is going to approach around two hundred eighty thousand dollars to complete. If it does get much more than that, there is a potential that we would defer. Block of South Park Street from Montgomery to Cherry Lane to another another timeline. But we'll have to see, so bids will be taken through the month of July. And we'll pass it like. Report all the results at our office.
My question. What about Broad and West Broad and Washington? Is there a plan for that?
West Broad and Washington, we would be using our own capital funds for that and equipment rentals. And Borough Forces, a gas company, torments and stuff, I thought the gas company was going to restore some of that. But I think whatever work needs to be done there, we'll do it with local forces.
Do we have a schedule?
We still wanna do while, we'll do with the equipment rentals and Borough Forces.
Do we have a schedule with those?
We do not have schedules, I need to warn, there's actually on West Broad Street another, there's a couple handicap or handicap ramps that need to be installed. We're still going back and forth with Penn Dot Lawn that wanted directly across from the theater. We still do not have full Penn Dot approval of that design for that ramp. So we gotta work the ramps in first and then we'll address.
Any other questions for Mike? And regarding the motions, you know, you can have a kind of redirect at that time too. All right, thanks, sir. We'll move on to committee reports then. Are there any committee report?
I have two. So reporting from the executive committee, we are in our second round of interviews for the Borough Manager position. They will happen, second round will happen on Wednesday. It's going very well, we had a wonderful pool of candidates with amazing backgrounds, and we're very lucky, we're fifteen applicants, we're down to four. And then the other report is, I don't know, this is a committee report, but Donna, Daryl and I went to the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Annual Conference. And I wanted to let everyone know, it was a wonderful event, and I reported back because you all sent us. And that's very, very, a great thing being on Borough Council. And I encouraged my fellow counselors to try to go next year. We left on Sunday, June fourth, Joe Theismann was the keynote speaker. It was really, really great, he talked about how his his injury and as a quarterback ended his career at age thirty five and how he pivoted. There's always a really good speaker every year, that's sort of motivational. And then the next day, we got, we get agency panel briefings from the state and the House. I sat it in on a legislation panel, I sat in on some zoning ordinance sessions. Donna and Daryl did different ones than me, so that we could all like exchange notes. The Monday, we went to the Capitol, they bussed us all out there, we went to advocacy day, we got to sit in the house and watch them in action on the floor, it was amazing. It was so much fun, I was geeking out, I like that stuff. And then the next day was more round tables, we we just listened to, there was one in women in government, Donna and I wanted to go to, but the woman was sick, so it didn't happen. And there were awards and ceremonies, and we met a lot of fellow borough boroughs, and it was really cool to meet all these people from different parts of our state. And again, it's always, the the annual is always at Hershey in June, so I encourage my fellow council members to take take advantage. And thank you for sending us. Oh, I'll send, I'll pass this around so you can see what what everything looks like.
Anyone else?
I'll speak for finance, finance committee met, we're ramping up our activities to prepare for the budget for twenty twenty four, and we're gonna meet again this week and. that was it. You sure?
That was perfect. I can link with it. When, here's my, when we have a first order, I meant to. At what time in August work session, do you think?
I expect to have the second quarter budget standing reports complete. Work session.
On Monday, okay. All right, thank you. And our vice president will lead that meeting. Thank you, sir. All right, thanks, Richard. Anyone else?
We'll go for public outreach. This Saturday, we'll have our Borough Council Office hours again out in the lobby from 11:01. Then as Jess mentioned, the July 3rd Friday is on the 21st. And the Borough Council will have a table at that 30th Friday. We also will have the Indian Valley Newsletter coming out, the Fall Edition around the September timeframe. And we did have two articles submitted from Sauterton next and one from our Borough Council President. So be on the lookout for that in the fall.
Who's manning the table the third time?
It's a good question.
I'll join you for the next one. I will be here next week.
We had done that. It's got a quarter June.
Yeah, in that around a good time too.
You wouldn't be on Main Street, but you'd be down on Chestnut Street.
Public say, there's one, there's at least one outstanding item on the fire pit.
Yeah, so we're still working through that, hoping to, the goal is to look at the, I'm blanking on the name, but the fire pit ordinance. And, and kind of recreating and reevaluating that and maybe coming with some changes, maybe not. So kind of, we're going to get a group together of, you know, we're going to talk to the fire department, the police and get a full understanding as to any changes that we would suggest on paper, what it means for, for them as well.
Right, yeah, I'm not suggesting any changes, but if there are, it will be good to beat the cooler season.
Yep, yeah.
A lot of people really want to do it. If there are no other committee reports, we'll move on to bills. And let's combine that as one motion.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the bills for the month of June 2023 and approve to pay the re-earned bill for July 2023.
Finance, I will stop. Finance committee didn't want to take any ownership on that one.
Finances.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilor Littlefield, Council of London for approval of the regular bills for the month of June as well as the recurring bills for July. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Do you would have seen the delineation on all those? All right, then, here none, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any opposed? If Mike that passes too. All right, sorry to keep the rest of me waiting for so long. So now my personal favorite time of the evening, I open up for a public comment. And if you are a borough resident or a property owner, please come to the podium and ask your name, many prayers or business. And we'd love to hear what you have to say. A new person, if I pick on you, I would pick on.
I'm used to being picked.
Would you like, would you like to come up and talk?
And there's a few people who can vouch for that. Joanne, Fabian. So I've had Art on the Hill a little over six years. We have wonderful local support, regional support. And I can say a lot for our street crew, who is always out there for the Fridays. It's amazing what they do before, during, after. And of course, the chief, who immediately came in and introduced himself when he took over. And what the police force does for us out there, it's awesome. I've commented often with customers that are in and out and talk about town. They're very proud of town. And they've said the same thing. We go through other towns and what I call the street crew. There's always a guy standing down in a hole and then four or five around him telling them what to do, how to do it on the phone, whatever. We never ever see that in town. If, if anything, Steve's working as hard, if not harder than his crew. And I date Ray back to 2015 with Mike when I think he was close to starting. So I'm proud to Sauterton, you know, we have I dress, but not part of the borough. We're in fine country in town. But proud to be here and Sauterton has supported us as much as we have thrived in town. So thank you.
You can pay me back, you can pay me back sometime. All right, we're going to, anyone else? All right, then I'll close public comment at this time and we'll move forward to the business of the evening. So council, we have seven motions. And we're going to do this quickly. The first is the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the, sorry, to adopt resolution 2023-04, approving and adopting the Montgomery County 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official Hazard Mitigation Plan of the Borough of Sauterton.
I'll start him up. Okay, I had motions by councillors, Monday and Charlotte for the adoption of resolution number 2023-04 to approve and adopt the Montgomery County 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan. That will become the official Hazard Mitigation Plan for the borough. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, I'm not going to read the resolution. But basically, it's for the, any natural or human being hazards that are very serious. And we have to adopt this. Effectively, we'd be eligible for any federal, the county fund, like we were then. You know, have big, big problems here. So we're going as the world goes on this in accordance with the DMA 2000. So there are no other comments, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. And any oppositions? If Mike that passes, all right, let's go to another exciting time for, for the appointments. And we discussed this obviously at the last work session. So we, we had some great candidates come forward for the Civil Service Commission. And we're glad that you guys put your hat in the mix and real proud to get that gone. So may I motion for the Civil Service to point that?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael R. Pipe, 570 East Garfield Avenue of Sauterton to serve as a member of the Police Civil Service Commission to fill the non-expire term of Michael Moffett through December 31st of 2026.
I'll second. Next one first, okay, so I have motions by Councilor Charlie and Rogers to appoint Michael R. Pipe of 570 East Garfield Avenue to serve as a member of the Police Civil Service Commission. And he will fill the non-expire term of Mike Moffett through December 31st of 2026. Any questions, comments? All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you, Mike. And I'll ask both of you to just come through in a moment, but let's do the second motion for the, for the alternate.
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Tammy D'Agostino, 261 Highland Avenue of Sauterton to serve as an alternate member of the Police Civil Service Commission through December 31st of 2028.
I'll second. Yeah, a second motion by Councilor Charlie and Rogers to appoint Tammy D'Agostino. And we haven't got the name right tonight. 261 Highland Avenue to serve as the alternate member of the Police Civil Service Commission through December 31st of 2028. All right, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous as well. Congratulations. For the sake of time, council, let's take a moment to, you know, meet these guys. And I want to give a guidance to, for the manager. If you could set up a commission meeting, because one of the things, one of the first things we need to do is determine who this chair and co-chair will be of that in addition with the other, with the other members. So let's do that as soon as possible and make sure. And furthermore, I know you would have familiarized yourself with the code, the ordinance, the statutes. But there is some nice training available out there and maybe even that magazine that Julie's passing around that at, at some point, you know, they offer them frequently in the state and in our region specifically. So I'd encourage you guys to take advantage of that as well.
Mr. President, in scheduling that meeting, perhaps we should also include the chief and solicitor because we may want to look at some changes with respect to maybe using a consortium for testing and stuff like that. Our current regulations really.
Not bad. Did you think we should do it in that? Well, that'd be great, but if the, if the logistics don't work out for everyone, we should at least get them going and appoint the chair and co-chair. But if we can pull it all together in one meeting, absolutely.
Oh, let's get, get some of that process started.
Please invite me or the mayor's optional, as well as the chair of public safety. Awesome, let's move on to the Fire Marshal.
The President, make a motion to appoint Albert Sergio, 45 West Walmart Street, Sauterton, to serve as Deputy Fire Marshal.
Proud of you, Donna. I have a motion by Council Rogers and Littlefield to appoint Al Sergio, 45 West Walmart, to serve as Deputy Fire Marshal. Any questions or comments? All right, these were all predetermined agreement by, by these folks as well. All right, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, that passes as well and likewise for the assistant.
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Donald Lynch to serve as Assistant Fire Marshal.
A motion by councillors, Monday and Hubert, to appoint Don Lynch to serve as the Assistant Fire Marshal.
Swim meet over.
You're going to be there all weekend. All right, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Any? That passes, Mike. And now for the planning commission. A good finance question, Andy. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew S. Lauter of 325 Highland Avenue, Sauterton to serve another term as a member of the Sauterton Planning Commission through July 2nd, 2020.
I'll second. Hail motion by Councilor Charlie and Littlefield to appoint Andrew S. Lauter, 325 Highland Avenue to serve on the planning commission for another term through July 2nd of 2028. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any compositions? That passes. Two more.
Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize.
Let me get a chance to mess that up. Thank you.
To authorize the open cherry that and then advertise an ordinance to amend the open container regulations for certain events and require permits from the Sauterton Police Department.
Now, second.
Mine.
Okay, I'm going to tread carefully. I have motion by Councilor Charlie, Monday, to authorize the borough service to prepare and advertise an ordinance to amend that open container regulations for certain events and require permits from the Sauterton Police Department. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
I would just make one comment to say, I think about how far Sauterton Borough and public ordinance. I mean, we are becoming a destination and not that long ago, this was certainly not what this community was talking about, so kudos.
The only thing I will say is, there's already been a lot of due diligence by the Chief Public Safety Committee and the Solicitor already back on board. In fact, the last round of recommendations from the Solicitor have already been incorporated. And for the public, there will get a final, final draft and there will be a public announcement, you know, experience period and all of that before we give an official motion. So this motion is to basically simply authorizing the Solicitor to prepare and advertise. All right, then, I have a motion by Councilor Sally and Monday, and all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous as well. And the final potentially of the evening is advertisement for bids and for the 2023 Seamen Road Reconstruction Project.
Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize the advertising for bids for the 2023 Road Reconstruction Project.
I'll second. Motion by councillors, Littlefield and Rogers to authorize the ads for the bids in 2023 Road Reconstruction Contact. So this will allow, as Mike mentioned about for bids. All right, any questions, comments? All right, in none, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right, may I have a motion to withdraw?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Colin.